It's now six o'clock, so I would like to call the public hearing to order. Dr. Feeney, do you want to make any comments prior to opening this for public comments?
Just that the calendar is, that we're looking at is a continuation of the innovative calendar that's been done the last two years. It's very similar to the last two years. The one thing that would be different is the full professional development days. Instead of all being on Monday, there's two on Monday, two on Friday. And again, that's done. We picked that so that families could have a long weekend as they so choose. But having them all on Monday was, didn't work as well with some of the specials and schedule. So, other than that, it's a continuation of what we've been doing and what we believe to be working.
So we'll open it up to the floor. Any of you have any comments, questions? Marissa, or you?
I like it.
You like it?
As a teacher, I, very much so, I like it.
Oh, okay. Good to hear.
I would say that the move to make it both on Monday and Friday really helped us out with the elementary because, and just to give you a little bit better understanding, we have certain classes that have art on Monday. And when, if we had art, if we had, like we're doing it this year, they miss a lot of art. And now with moving it to Monday and Friday, it helps the elementary out a bunch. It really does. It not only don't miss that one, that one class all the time. And I'm just happy that it works out and everybody's scheduled it. We can do that, so we can mix it up a little bit.
Who's starting first?
When?
August, before we start, I think, weekend of the 17th, I think.
It's before end?
Before end, so it starts, which wasn't a factor, but somebody pointed that out after we got started.
Seventeenth, eighteenth, nineteenth.
Should be, I heard a lot of good things about starting on Wednesday, personally.
Yeah, I think that that was popular with a lot of parents.
Yeah.
I think a lot of students, the elementary chairs by Friday were...
They're wearing their teachers.
They were wearing.
Oh, yeah.
That, yeah, they're...
Did you come over and brush?
Five days, right, right at once. Hard on elementary kids.
It could look today.
Hard on high school kids.
And their teachers.
Well, I don't like to sit here and stare at one another, but we will leave this area open for at least five minutes, if somebody else shows up. Silence is golden.
Did you receive any negative comments about this calendar from your constituents?
I haven't heard a word. I haven't heard any negative about it at all.
I think, again, coming from my perspective, not having to try to teach for part of a class, or part of the day, and then try to finish up and put everything away, and then run up and try to get yourself settled and get started, and then an hour and a half of it is done. So being able to set an entire day aside for us to start something, get something accomplished, feel like you've gotten somewhere, and not try to, you know, try to teach and do all of these things, and just try to stay focused, I think is a really good thing. So, and I think it's better for the kids, too, because any short day is craziness. It just adds something different to the, the school day, and gives kids that opportunity to, you know, make an excuse for whatever. Be crazy.
Could you spend a little time talking about what the innovative calendar is, how it differs from the regular calendar, what the benefits are through the school?
Yeah, the biggest difference is that the state says 180 teaching days. This has 177 teaching days. And the trade-off for that is that there aren't any late arrivals or early dismissals for professional development, which is what Larissa was talking about. So when you add in, and I don't think it's in the application here, but when you actually add up the instructional time available in this calendar is greater than it is with 180, and having, say, early outs once a month. So the innovative part, innovative is a term that's used by the DE, that's why we use that term. That's really, it's a focus that we have. Full-day professional development, and we don't dink around with the other instructional time. That's the advantage.
Financially, we pay some of our support staff three days less. We run the buses, three days less.
That's true.
We cook lunch, three days less.
What was the cost per day on that, again?
I think we were figuring, when we did this two years ago, I want to think, we saved $12,000.
I have $12,500.
That's on the account. Well, unless there are further comments, I'd ask for a motion for adjournment of this hearing.
Second.
Motion second for adjournment of the hearing. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Hearing adjourned. We'll move right into the regular ESAC board meeting. Welcome all of you who are here. I'll remind you that ESAC County empowers all students to become productive, responsible citizens in an ever-changing world society. Do you approve the minute, the agenda?
It might make a suggestion at this point of moving beyond, John, jump in if you think this is off-base, but adjusting the agenda to hold the consent items until the other two board members get here.
That's fine.
We should do that, too. Do you think you can do that through some kind of motion, rather?
We could, let's amend the agenda to move the consent items to follow personnel, and then we'll be sure if anybody's here, go in. All right?
Yeah. You need a motion?
Motion of that effect. Okay. Motion second to move consent items to follow personnel. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, three, zero. Okay, then let's move to the item five, education spotlight.
We've got two teachers, high school teachers, and just for the public, we try to do the spotlight each month on something that's going on, and rotate that through. This is high school, these are two high school teachers, and next, I think next month, we're talking middle school and then elementary in December, if that's not right. This is Larissa Rupp now, in East Waters, Larissa teaches in the agricultural area, Denise teaches in social studies. District-wide, we've been working on a professional development last year with something called Teaching for Understanding, and an outgrowth that is Understanding by Design, UBD, and concept-based teaching and learning. And they have gotten their feet wet with this, so they...
Well, I will try to do a brief, I guess excerpt about what Understanding by Design is. I am just getting started on using Understanding by Design, so the, the information I just handed out to you is a rough draft form of something that Mr. Litter and Barb Crudoff and myself have been working on. I have offered two new classes this year, and this one is actually one that I am doing the new curriculum work with. So this is just kind of a rough outline of what UBD looks like. And then Denise has actually been teaching it this year, so she's going to kind of show some of the things that she's been doing, and a little bit of feedback, because I'm not teaching this class yet. It's not offered until spring semester, so, but anyway. I don't want to read everything word for word here, but just kind of want to give you guys an overview of what it is. Basically, UBD is a framework for trying to get students to understand. Understanding by Design is the whole theme all the way through. It's curriculum-driven, it helps teachers set very clear goals, to help set very clear assessments, so we know exactly what it is that we want our students to know when we get done with a particular unit or item of study. The neat thing is, though, and we'll talk about that a little bit later, you work backwards, which is very different than most curriculum. Most curriculum, okay, this is what I want to teach, and then I get to the end, this is my assessment, this is what I want to know, I want the kids to know, from what I taught. You do it completely, completely backwards. You say, okay, this is what I want my kids to know, and to be able to understand, and to be able to do, and then figure out, okay, how do I need to go about teaching that? So it's completely backwards in design compared to what we've been used to. The primary goal, again, of education should be for students to understand, and again, the big thing with this is authentic opportunities for kids to explain, interpret, emphasize, analyze, perspective, I mean, whatever. So again, trying to get that realistic point of view in there, instead of, okay, well, we teach this, and we take this true and false test, or this little multiple choice, and we call it good. It's to really get the kids doing something authentic, and being able to apply something in a different situation. That's the really cool thing about it. Okay, so you can do it in this little set, or this little piece, but if I give you something that's completely new and different, can you take what you've learned and apply it in that setting? In my veterinary technology class, I think that's a huge thing, because there's so many things, you can't, kids, the veterinarians, whatever, cannot know everything there is to know about all livestock at all times. But I've seen this situation before, what can I take from what I've learned here and apply it to a different situation? So I'm very excited about being able to do this, and I think it's going to be really great for the kids, too. So, and I've got a lot of interest in kids taking this class. So basically, again, with it, there's these six facets that you follow, again, with that backwards design, and it kind of gets away from just textbook coverage. I'm not one that teaches by textbook, I never have, but there are some teachers, okay, this is the unit, this is what we do, this is the unit, this is what we do, where we do throw a lot of activities in there to make things fun, and exciting, and interesting, whatever. But again, we don't really have that goal in mind at the end, exactly what do we want the kids to know? And this helps get away from that textbook coverage, or just activities, just because they're fun, but to make sure that they really get us to that end point. Again, student performance, school performances can also be raised through this, because again, it's that authentic unit of it, when they can figure it out, they can apply it in our setting, can we get them to use that knowledge, that skill, and to be able to do that understanding, and be able to figure out, probably solve on their own? And again, teachers that were most effective, and we get feedback, that's one of the big things about this, too. We get feedback from the kids. We get some peer coaching, some peer teaching, things like that, so we can see, you know, how did this go? How did the kids like it? Let the kids tell us, because the kids are the ones that need to learn this, and they need to understand it. So get a little bit of feedback from them, and then, now that you have it, do something with that feedback, instead of just getting it, okay, well, they didn't do very good on this test, well, put it in the gradebook and call it good. Okay, oh, why did they, or why didn't they, and what can we do to make it better for the next time? So that's one of the things that really stressed in here. So teachers, schools, and districts benefit, obviously, from working smarter through this, design sharing, again, peer reviews. What it offers is a backward planning, is a set of design standards with rubrics, and again, comprehensive training, 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 getting the assistance. I have sat down with Litter and, and Mrs. Crudoff, and we have gone through many, many, many hours of putting this stuff together, to have people help you, and to coach you through. And we've got, you can see there, there's editing that's already done on that little packet that I've already put out there, because we're changing some of the wording, and how it's going to go, but again, going through, and editing, and critiquing, and getting reviews, and things like that along the way. What it's not, this is not a prescriptive plan to fix things. Okay, I'm going to take this, and we're just going to fix it, and it's all going to be perfect. That's not what it's not, and it's not a new philosophy on education. We've always wanted students to understand, but now we're just taking a different approach to making sure that our students understand. And it is focused on the design of the curriculum, and the big thing, and again, I've not taught this yet, but from my understanding, you don't have day-to-day grades. So that's one of the things that we had some parents, I think, last year, a little concerned, well, I don't see a grade every day, or every other day, because it's not based on daily lesson plans, it's based on big units. And we have big projects that are, again, are that authentic assessment, to see if they've really got the big picture, and it's not these just little day-to-day lesson planning. Where I got my information from is from the people that actually are in charge of UBD and whatever, so I did not make any of that information up. I kidnapped it all from their website, from their book, so, but I just want to give you a little bit of an idea of what UBD is. The biggest thing, it's making sure that students understand, because when they understand, they can do so much more with it, instead of just a little bit of a test of yes or no, true or the false type situation. The papers that I handed out show you, if I can get the copy here, I'm sorry, we've got my show steer out. Does he? He's lovely. Okay.
Looks like it would taste good.
I bet he did, although we didn't eat him. I don't think Will would have been all over that so much. I'm sorry, I thought I had my stuff open. And I don't. One of these days, I'll get you. Okay, just look at the sheets in front of you. I don't know where it went, where did it go? I took it out of that folder, and I put it in the board folder. Okay, the one sheet that I showed her, that you have there, this is basically our whole semester planning of what it's going to look like, so you can kind of get to see the big idea, all of systems, this is again, vet techni, veterinary technology, all systems are interconnected, you can see the conceptual lens, and the different things that the students are going to have to be able to know, and they're essential questions in how you design everything. So it's pretty much, I've got everything all figured out from the beginning of the semester until the end of the semester, so we've got all that anatomy and physiology for the first, like, three months of the class, because if kids don't understand anatomy and physiology, they're not going to understand anything else. They're not going to understand the nutrition, the disease, the problems, if you don't understand the muscular system, the disease, or digestive system and all that that goes along with it. So this just kind of gives you an idea of what that might look like. And then the big thing, and I'm sorry for my name, so I have the big hall, I'm the I teacher here, so, you have this huge assessment, and you have some larger assessments all through, along, but this is my big assessment, that's going to be my semester test, and it basically encompasses the entire semester about what we've been doing and what we've been teaching. And the kids are going to be given a video clip, that doctor, I've been working with Dr. Bettine, and he's been taking video clips of different things that he has happened at the vet clinic, or when he's out on farms, and we're taking these video clips, and then the kids are going to get a scenario, and then they're going to go through, okay, here's my video clip, this is what happened, what do I know, what don't I know? Okay, what questions do I need to ask, whatever, and kind of go through what a veterinarian would do, based on what they have learned throughout the entire semester. And it's, to me, I just think this is going to be a really awesome way to see if we can just kind of rack everything up that the kids have been learning about livestock, livestock production, disease, and the whole deal, and this will be their semester finals.
So will you have, will you have tests over phase one, two, and three?
You know, we don't have that assessment stuff done yet. That is what we have worked to.
You have a final test, for sure.
You will have final, you will have tests and quizzes and things just randomly within, and I will, I know for sure, because when I do my systems, there's like 13 different systems that the kids need to know, whether it's respiratory, the circulatory, digestive, and I'm not going to put all that off at the end. I mean, they need, we need to do some assessment along the way, but this is going to be like their big final thing. Do they get it? Do they understand? Do they see how everything works together? Because animals can't talk. They can't walk up and tell you, you know, I broke my leg here, and I don't know how I did it, or whatever. I mean, you have to be able to look at these guys, and figure out from their behaviors how they act, how they react, to be able to figure out, okay, so what can we do now? And like I said, Dr. Bettine has just been the absolute greatest in helping me do this, put the class together, he's doing all these videotapes, we're going to sit down and write all the scenarios up. He helped me even with the grading. He thought that the scenario, 35 percent of their final grade should be based on that, what did they actually see, how did they diagnose the problem? Their questioning is supposed to be, I think, 50 percent, I don't have that written there, is 50 percent, because he said, that's the most important thing. He's like, people think, well, well, you're a vet, so you just work with animals. No, communication, he said, is A number one, because, again, the animals can't talk, so you have to communicate with the producer, with the owner, whatever, and find out what do they know. And he said, communication is such a big thing, so he thought that that would be 50 percent. And then I think diagnosis at the end, he said, that should be the smallest percent, the 15, he said, because there's things, he's like, I don't even know. And he's been a vet for how many years, and he said, sometimes I can't always diagnose that, he said, so that should be a very small percent. But anyway, it's just been, it's been awesome to be able to put this stuff together, and I cannot wait to use this in class. I just think it's just going to be great for the kids, and I know I'm going to enjoy it a lot, so. But I guess at this point, I will let Denise kind of talk about what she's been doing, because I haven't taught it, she has been teaching it, so. Denise, did you want yours projected up?
I used UBD with my world history class juniors. The first unit, the civilizations, and I took some notes while, while Larissa was talking. I think, call me Larissa, Larissa.
Larissa.
Something, I don't know if you said or not, it aligns with Iowa core, so that whole stuff with the concept teaching, it exactly goes along with that. We need to think of it more as the kids are uncovering the information, instead of going, you know, the inch deep in the mile wide thing, just to get through it. This day and age, as you know, we can internet search pretty much anything. They need to understand how and why, and it happened in ancient Greece, it happened again later, and it can happen now, and what those things are. Transfer across subjects, you did say that. I think the biggest thing I've taken away, well, not the biggest thing, but one big thing I've taken away, make it obvious. I always thought I was teaching this stuff, but this just makes it completely obvious. The first slide there that I gave you, that I wrote unit outline at the top, this is the sheet that I gave the kids when we started the unit. Yes, that is the one, thank you. No, that is not the one, sorry. Basically, just explaining what we're doing. Then I gave them the essential concept, they're in the bold, and again, that's straight out of Iowa core. The essential understandings, I didn't make those up, those are straight out of Iowa core, and I explained what that was. The essential questions for the first unit, development of civilizations, going from hominids just living in groups for survival into actual civilizations, where they developed religions, and governments, and specialized workers, and all that stuff. And I'd ask the kids, do you really need to know what happened in Mesopotamia? Well, no, that doesn't matter, but does it reflect now, in different countries such as Somalia, and Iraq, and Afghanistan, that those systems are breaking down, and it's having a reaction in 2011? And that was our end result, our end product. Along the way, I gave them a preliminary list, and I changed these around and altered them, because as I went through, and I realized some of them didn't make sense, and order didn't always make sense. But this was my first draft of different tasks that we would do along the way. Coming down to the end product, which was, again, researching that stuff, and that whole description is on the back, if you want to flip that over, the end product, is what they did. So this was their test. They researched the country of their choice, they had to tell me each of the breakdowns of what makes a civilization, where that country fell apart. And that was their test, I guess, of did they understand it? The feedback from the kids has been great. Every day, somebody says, I like this so much better than learning vocabulary, words, taking the test, and never using them again. So the kids do see the value, and it's amazing, some of the kids that you wouldn't think would care that get this.
So the engagement level with the kids, you're seeing a difference?
Way jumped, jumped way, way up. Yep. Yep, and they're getting it.
Yeah, so if they're engaging, and they're learning.
Exactly.
And they're understanding. And again, the big thing is, again, can we take that, what we get and hear, just like she's saying, and apply it to a different situation? What happened in Mesopotamia? How does that impact what is happening in other places, in other parts of the world? And that's the whole big thing, that, just that big understanding of what we're teaching.
And then, as part of our working with the teachers, and, like, we've been in Denise's room two times now, videotaped her, she's teaching, and interacting with the kids, we'll be in there one more time. So as they progress, they're also getting continuous, constant feedback from both me and Jill Sunblatt and Barb Crudoff on what we're seeing, we're asking questions, we're talking to kids. The potential for this to be a very powerful tool and program is absolutely enormous. And we were talking in our last staff meeting, the state of Iowa has petitioned the United States Department of Ed to get a waiver on No Child Left Behind. And one of those criteria that you're going to have to have completed for the waiver to go through is, how are you going to continue to measure success, and what data are you going to use? And a lot of this stuff all goes back to conceptual teaching, you know? When I was going through school, when I was, when I was in the classroom, everything was topical. We talked about World War II, Civil War, all those things, but it was all topic-based. We're moving away from topical discussions to conceptual teaching. You know, what is the big concept we're trying to get? Because, you know, the litmus test that we use, we talk about, is it a topic, or is it, or is it a concept? We talk about, is what we're teaching, is it timeless? You know, you look at what Denise was going over, we're talking about conflict, we're talking about civilization, we're talking about technology, those are timeless concepts that have been from the time of Mesopotamia to today. And that's, you know, that's one. We look at univers, I don't know if this is a term or not, but universitility. How far does it go beyond? Okay, is it a universal concept? All right? Does it go from, you know, from when, like I said, Mesopotamia to now? You know, because we talk about, in the area of social studies, time doesn't stop. But for social studies teachers who taught history, they tried to teach ancient civilization all the way to the present. So you're going to take a span, in nine months, you're going to cover the world at its beginnings. It doesn't. I mean, it's unrealistic, and in some cases, it's not good teaching, because they're getting so much information, and they're just, their heads are exploding. And so the conceptual way, and the conceptual analysis really pares that down, and gives them the freedom to focus on what they need to focus on. And you're going to hear a lot about UBD as it continues to move through ESAC, and we're partnering up with Lorenz Marathon in New Opona, and so there's some collegial teaching and discussion going on, too, but it's a lot of work. They make it sound very simple, and it's something that was just thrown together. It is a phenomenal amount of work for these two ladies to jump on board and do this. And we've got our social studies department doing this, Jeff Nielson's getting prepared for this, the science department, or the science teachers in the elementary have been doing it, the middle school teachers, the English, social studies are doing it, so it's just, it's excellent, it's time-consuming, but you know what? The bottom line is, kids are going to be benefiting from that, and that's what it comes out of.
They hate that they can't just Google an answer. They hate that. I just laugh, because they're actually having to think, and pull out their own examples and do stuff.
Like I said, these two have put in a large amount of time, and, you know, for Denise to allow me and Barb and Jill Sunblatt to jump in her class and videotaper, you know, is appreciated, and Larissa Rupp, now we'll get it here in about two, two, three months.
What do you do with that video, then, Kevin? Do you go back and watch it?
We watch it, we have to use it for other trainings, for other teachers. We use it for a variety of ways. We're actually using technology, at one point, we were, we had, Barb and I were in the classroom, and we were using an iPad to project what she was doing, because Jill Sunblatt was in, was in Lorenz, I think is where she was at, and she was watching it on another computer with some other teachers that were there as well. So, yeah, it's pretty valuable that we're using. And plus, it gives them a chance to see, and we can look back, and as we talk about this other teacher, this is what was going on, this is, here's the big idea. It just, it just helps us to analyze what we're, what we're doing, you know?
You've got research on situations which civilization has failed with its people, and then you list a half a dozen countries there. Might be interesting to do that relative to the United States. And we've got a lot of unrest, a lot of unrest taking place in this country right now, and they're asking for not only social change, but economic, government change. It's very similar to the revolution, and how it started, so it might be interesting to, talk about that a little bit.
And that's what's neat, is just how universal this can fall into place in different discussions, in different contexts, different time periods, different places, absolutely. And that, that's what's neat about it. It offers kids, taking what they learned from Mesopotamia and applying it today, same context, same kind of general ideas, but different time period. same kind of general ideas, but different time period.
So is this something that we can do with more subjects than?
That's what our whole professional development here from now, I don't even know how many years out we've got it.
2014.
2014 that we're putting these together. But it takes an unbelievable amount of time and you get done working on this stuff and you just feel like you've been run over by a train. I sat, I locked myself in my room 'cause I had to get some stuff done before I was meeting Barb again and to go through some stuff and for five hours I worked on it. I got out of there, I'm just like, oh. I mean, I just thought I was just, I was so done. But I mean, when you get done with it and the stuff that you've got, it's just, it's so cool. And I can't wait to have the opportunity to use it.
And the feedback from kids, I'm just using Denise as an example, has been just wonderful. I mean, it's fun to go in and class.
That's the main thing, I mean, you know, we can sit here and talk about this all we want to, the teachers are happy with it, but if the kids are learning from it, that's what we do.
Our intent is by the fall of 2012, every teacher will be rolling out a unit.
That's gonna be.
It's pretty aggressive.
It is very aggressive. I mean, knowing how much I did this summer and having you and Barb right there with me the whole time, I mean, it is, it's big deal.
Well, we should back up just historically a little bit too, and I think Kevin alluded to it, but Mike and some older grade teachers last year worked through this model brilliantly with science and then the fourth grade teachers got involved. So then these are two examples of what's going on that's gonna continue to grow. And I think if you talk to the teachers that have immersed themselves in this, you'll get a pretty common response.
I think they like teaching this way better.
The exciting thing about it is that we hear so much about what's being expected today, the Iowa Core related type requests made at schools. And we wonder, the public wonders, you know, what are we doing? Is our school doing anything? This is the evidence that we are and it's very exciting to find out about it.
Which, I mean, it's really neat too, 'cause like with mine, obviously my stuff is very much science based that I'm doing, so a lot of my stuff is coming from Iowa Core science. But so much of the workplace skills, because of working, 'cause the kids are gonna go work at the vet clinic and they have to do so many hours of clinical work with the vet. And I mean, so all these workplace skills and things that they're getting, that's part of the Iowa Core that, I mean, is in my science class. So that's really kinda neat, how we can just kinda blend everything together and make it work too, so.
If you get all this information, I'll probably get my head back. Information fly back at that Barbara. Why we're paying those people so much money.
The other thing too.
I only teach nine months out of the year. Only work nine months out of the year.
The other thing too, and I always said that once I don't feel excited about teaching classes anymore, I don't think I need to be teaching classes anymore, and the spark that I cannot wait to teach this new class. I mean, I really can't. So I think it just kinda gives you a whole new perspective and gets you fired up about teaching again and doing something very different than what you've done in the past. So I'm very anxious.
All I can say is thank you, I really appreciate the work that you're doing and hearing about it. Great.
Pleasure, Chris.
Thank you, ladies. Item six reports, Dr. Dean?
Well, it won't be able to try to even back by any means. Just an update, just to keep everybody with updated information. You know, last month we passed the Senior Citizen Lifetime Activity Pass and I don't know if anybody else came in today, but we were at eighty or above people from our district that have come in to get those passes. They've been extremely well received. That's pretty cool, they come back certified enrollment. We have in the past offered driver's ed during the course of the year as well as in the summer, one section at the high school. And something that's different this year is that we didn't, we had enough students that we didn't have time for the driving part of it. So we've contracted out with a company from Carroll for just that piece of it and then Mr. Mailer is continuing to teach. It's just a change that seems to be working very well at this point. Tomorrow was our first meeting of the Insurance Study Committee and that's a committee made up of various representatives to, thanks ladies. Made up of different groups of representatives from the different classifications within the district and looking at insurance costs, medical insurance costs, looking at different programs. It's a study committee. And then whatever comes out of that then will become part of the more formal process through negotiations. Excited about that, to learn more about our options with insurance. Update on the propane and natural gas, I believe John jumped in Lakeview, well, we'll do all late first. If it's not done, it will be within a matter of a couple days. That conversion's completely done at Lakeview. The last I had heard at least was that everything was in place, waiting for Black Hills Energy to do what they have to do. But we're still optimistic that that conversion from propane to natural gas will be done for us to utilize those savings yet this fall. Looking at a web-based program primarily for our at-risk programs, but it has some flexibility, it's called Odyssey Ware. And again, it's a web-based program that we would use in the Flex Ed Center within the at-risk program at the high school and at the middle school. It also has potential toward lots of different ways, but it's another avenue, another tool in the toolbox for our teachers and working with kids. That's a direction that would be new for this district. And then the last thing, I guess, or the next last thing would be that we'll be hosting here in SAC, Chamber Main Street Coffee on the 27th, which I believe is a week from Thursday. Does that sound right? Yeah, a week from Thursday. We'll be in this room and it'll be a great opportunity for the public if they haven't been in to see the changes in the building. That's kinda the logic, so just making sure everyone's aware of that. Then the last thing I guess I would share, and I'm probably gonna just hand it off to John, deals with certified enrollment. Do you wanna explain certified enrollment, John?
No, but I'll explain the stage I handed out. Grab the page with the green highlights. Starting just with the top line, for 2011, we have 861 resident students that stay within our district. We have 54 students that go to neighboring districts for either just open enrollment or special education programs. So that's a total on line seven of 915 kids that we're gonna get paid for, that's called our budget enrollment, 915. The line below that is 57 students from neighboring districts that come to our district for education. And the state will not give us those funds, but we will build the neighboring districts for them, so.
So we have 57 coming in and 54 going out for whatever reason.
Right now we do, yeah. And this all has to get tied out over the next two weeks and agreed upon by all districts, but that's where we're at today. And line 11 then says there's 918 students in our district as compared to 913 last year. Granted, that doesn't count, this is five-year-olds, so four-year-olds aren't in this list. So if you've seen a number earlier in the high 900s, that probably included four-year-olds, I think maybe a month or two ago you had a count?
Yeah, it was just about the seat count.
Yeah, so it's probably been close to 950 or 60, I suppose.
The next stage of this process too, I understand, is we have a phone call with the DE on Thursday, it's normal process, to talk through any discrepancies on who's claimed in this district or who's claimed in that district, any of this. So it'll actually, should be finalized at 8:30 on Thursday morning, that's when we have the conference call set up. It's just the way this process works. So overall, our enrollment is holding.
Pretty steady.
Pretty steady.
And I've talked to, I think, every neighboring district today, so there will be a small change, but nothing drastic.
And one of the questions I have, and we probably won't deal with it here, is we have zero kids listed in the preschool.
The state knows that and it'll be taken care of.
And that's one of those sessions that we're gonna be talking about on Thursday.
I really and I talked about that today.
Okay, I hadn't talked about it yesterday.
That was just a mistake. I think Julie's corrected it, corrected it on easier and that should reflect different numbers.
Yeah, no, I knew, I looked in those rooms and there's far more than zero in there.
Well, scared me a little bit when we were part of that round, we get money for everything that isn't turned up.
So that's all I have.
Can you explain the limit of English proficiency waiting to them?
If you have a student whose English is a second language, there's a small waiting that generates a small amount of money, so you can provide materials or extra help if you need to.
That's the additional above the 1.0 waiting?
Correct.
So we do have such a person?
So we have at least one student, and it's not obviously a full additional student, it's a portion.
Would you like to have?
Just every month, we're gonna put it on in the report and where we're at in the School in Need of Assistance process. Where that is, again, if you remember with the mandated procedure, which we really believe is a great process, we really do, there's different stages you go through. The audit stage is data collection, gathering, looking at the facts, getting at the root cause of the performance issue. Then it's the design phase and we met all day today on the design phase. And that's where you start taking what the information's telling you and then developing a plan. The plan will be finalized, well, the next step after today is actually to take the draft of the plan to a peer review process, which is, I believe, set for next Thursday, a week from this Thursday, I believe, or Wednesday, I forget, but we'll be there. And that's where other schools that are in the same boat in School in Need of Assistance, we review plans and it's part of the mandated process. Following that then, the final plan has to be submitted to the Department of Education, which has to be done by November 1st. And so we are right on schedule with exactly where we should be. We're having, there's been lots of things occurring behind the scenes with the data collection that's gone well. Our teachers, I can't, and Danny, I can't compliment them enough for embracing this process. And we're gonna stay at it. So that's what I can tell you, that now in November, we'll give you a look at what the actual plan that was submitted to the DE and by then it should be approved and by the DE. That will be available, right now it's still in pieces.
Anybody have any questions or comments about that? Okay, let's move to item seven, unfinished business. That's a discussion and approval, man to approval of board policies.
Here we go.
Let's see, closed session, I can go. First one on closed sessions, the only part that has changed over existing policy is underlined there on page one, where it adds, or in the case of a sale, reduce the price the board could receive for the property is now, or sale of a particular piece of real estate now legally is going to close session. Before it was for the purchase, this also includes a sale. That's really the only change in the entire policy. It makes sense to me. You wanna do them all at once? Okay. Employee records regulation, again, item three is the one that is new and it's been added. John, you can jump in if you know more about it than I do. It's the recommended language from the Iowa School Board Association. Identifying different things for inspection of employee records. That's about all I can say on it.
I think it made the policy more explicit, I mean, we'll just pretend that now it isn't there.
And then the governmental accounting practices and regulations.
This is, just to update our policy, it's a match with the new law, so it used to have either designated fund balance or undesigned fund balance, which were exactly what they sounded like. Now they've broken it into four classifications, so this policy would just align our policy with the regulations.
And then the last policy is an update of the use of video cameras on school buses regulation. The front page is, it's got a couple changes in the student records, apparently do the video without consent from a student if the other students are just bystanders. It's new, that language. If there's an altercation, blah, 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 then consent still needs to be there. And that makes sense as well to me. The review of the videotapes, you would have to make a choice of the options. Our current policy is option one with seven days listed in there. And then down in the video monitoring system, our current policy is with option two. And to my knowledge, I guess I didn't talk real specifically with Phil, but I know that it has worked fine. And so those existing options is what I would recommend as you write. So it'd be option one and then option two.
Questions or comments about the policies?
These are all recommended by Iowa Association.
They have all been part of our policies too. A few of them have been changed a little bit to, as a way of updating them, but basically they are the same policies. Probably the biggest change is in employer records. Actually, that is, that is the biggest change. And it's simply, is a little more explicit about how those records can be used, who can access them, that sort of thing. I think that unless you have a question or a reservation about a particular policy, we could deal with all of these in one motion.
I have a question about the governmental accounting. Where it says use both, does that mean that we're gonna put an and in there? I just recommend board authorizes the superintendent and or board secretary is what I recommend. John, would you prefer something different?
Superintendent?
And I voted the other way. I'd probably do the and or.
That's fine, in this district, if those two aren't gonna work together, I don't know if there are bigger issues.
I don't have any real implications with these, I like option one and option two, so I think as far as I'm concerned, keep it the way we've been doing it on the use of video cameras.
I'll make a motion to approve these four policy changes as read.
I have a motion to second to approve the policy provisions as presented. Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion parrot. Motion carries five zero. Okay, now we'll come to the Iowa School Board Association Convention, which is next month.
Yes, Wednesday and/or Thursday, November 16th and 17th. I didn't bring the packet, but it seems like the delegate assembly is actually first day.
On Thursday.
That's on Wednesday, and then the speakers, and Jamie Volmer, I see, is speaking, and here for everyone. Really, at this point, it's your state convention. What I really just need is whether you're planning on attending.
I don't wanna attend both days, but I would attend the Thursday session. Sorry, Marty, I'd love to sit on the.
I was gonna say, if I want to go on Thursday too.
I'd like to be in the assembly with you. I'd have so much fun.
At the end of the world.
I was thinking I could go to one of the days, so.
Thursday is a little more beneficial, but it's probably not certain.
I'm not the only one.
Lisa?
I would go, but if you need me to go on Wednesday, if we, I can go, whatever.
I can go either day too, but.
If you, if we need somebody there, which it doesn't make any difference.
I don't think it really does either, in all honesty.
That one vote that we get.
You'll get more out of the educational pieces on Thursday than you will.
Well, then I'd just soon go on Thursday.
Good enough. We'll get her taken care of.
So would I.
Yep, thank you.
To new business. Discuss and approve the 2012-13 school calendar. We had the hearing. Heard no opposition and a lot of, quite a few favorable comments from Mr. Fisher, from a couple of teachers. So what are your wishes about the new calendar? Understanding that if we adopt this calendar, we do have to ask the department for a waiver, which we have done in the past, and it's always been granted.
I'll make a motion now to approve the 2012-13 new calendar.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion to second to approve the calendar. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. The 2012-13 school calendar is approved as presented. Okay, discuss and/or approve student handbook language.
Well, we put that on with publication deadline so that we could deal with it. The, that's a middle school change that will be coming. Dealt with use of Google accounts. And frankly, we're still working on that. So there isn't an agenda item on that. That will come at a later time with recommended changes to policy.
Okay. About technology usage, John?
It is. We're using some Google products, and handbook says one thing, and we're, our practice is something different. And our practice is far better than our handbook language, so we need to fix that. But we wanna fix it right. It gets complicated because to use Google Docs, for instance, you have to have an email account, and you're technically supposed to be 14 years of age to have that email account, which gets sticky when you're dealing with less than 14-year-olds in the school. And so we're working with Google to figure a way through that.
Okay, now, I see a request, two requests to address the board. The first one deals with school uniforms.
For those of you that don't know me, my name is John Green. I attended school here as a child, and I've been back for 12 years with my children. I have three of them in the district. I guess my main concern is that our dress code policy, really, to me, is kind of almost nonexistent. It's pretty open as to, it's very clear what you can't wear as far as what we can't show, but nothing's very really clear on what's appropriate, I guess. It's kind of left up to the principals. The last three years, I have been in the high school building. My mother is the nurse in the district, and I go in and help her with one of her classes. And the thing that just keeps getting me is, I know through my industry that every 30 years, we cycle fashion back around. So when this policy was first brought into place, we may not have had this issue. But within the last probably five years, what's been known as hot pants have come in style, and they are shorts with an inseam of one inch or less. And unfortunately, that is what I, as a parent, person in the community, is starting to notice more and more and more. Excuse me. And it's showing up in our school. I also have two boys in the middle school. And I guess I just know from having prepubescent boys that too much skin is shown, and we're not focusing on our education. They're focusing on the cute little girls sitting next to them. I don't know right now if necessarily we need to go uniforms, as just maybe revisit the dress code policy and see if there's some changes, maybe some different wording. To me, it doesn't seem really clearly defined. So maybe, I guess I'm here just kind of ask the board if we can start looking into that. We all have children, grandchildren, see high schoolers, teenagers running around the community. I think we know just how short the shorts have gotten to be. And I really don't think that school is the place for them. I think we have to hold ourselves and our students to a higher level of respect than that. So maybe at this point in time, it's a time just to kind of look and say, okay, we need to kind of define some of these. In orientation, we are told that you can wear tank tops. They just need to be two finger width straps on them to make sure your bra straps are covered. But in the handbook, it clearly states, tank tops are prohibited. So from what a principal is saying, in orientation also isn't clearly matching what's stated in the handbook. So maybe just kind of to look at those and see where we can kind of make sure that we're getting on board and then enforcing the policy that we put in place as far as, you know, what kind of, what we will expect from our children and the levels of respect that we will hold them to. I think that when you're dressed better, you feel better, you participate better. And really, I think too much focus is our times are changing, is almost put on, you're almost defined mainly by what you have. And so that's to me where I think a uniform would come in handy, kind of help to get rid of some of those. But I think if now, if we could just kind of revisit the policy and look at it a little bit, maybe define it for some of us parents who are hearing one thing but reading another and, you know, just make those lines clear as to, this is what we expect and this is what we will allow and will not allow in our buildings. I've had a lot of feedback come back from the public for the last two years. This is something that's kind of, I've gone, eh, do you, don't you touch this, do you? I think we do have a right to freedom of expression. For a lot of kids, I do know that that is through clothing. I am, my industry could be considered fashion industry. You express yourself through your hair and what you wear and accessories and other things. And I don't really wanna take that away from somebody. But I think that we do need to have some clear guidelines as to what we will and will not allow in our buildings. And that's, that's it.
I appreciate your comments.
And very well, so we'll take it into consideration.
Another thing too, I guess, is, is I was sitting around thinking of this also. We have, I think in our high school buildings, once you get up to the, like, the senior level, they do have leadership committees, I do believe. And I think that this is something that if you get the students involved in, some of these students who are more leaders, have them come up with some policies and present them. If you get the kids involved in making some of the decisions, then maybe we won't get such a push with, this is what we don't want, because it's a board of their peers who have said, here's what we deem is appropriate in our building. So maybe see if we can get some committees and, I mean, if help is needed, surveys, parents, I'll be more than happy to help or oversee, sit somewhere, take surveys. I'm just, I think it's time that we kind of revisit it due to the way that our fashion is changing.
Appreciate your concern. Facilities planning and usage.
Thanks for putting me on the agenda. I was, in September, created a, a facilities planning and usage committee. It's my understanding that the scope of this committee is going to be to make recommendations about whether to shut a building down or not, if it should come to that. Is that accurate? Is that within the scope of this facilities?
That might be one of the things that they would do, but that is certainly not the purpose of the committee.
Correct. I understand that. But it is one of the things they'll do.
It's one of the things that they could do.
One of the things that they could do. This committee will be meeting without the public's knowledge. The public will not know when the meetings are gonna take place. I assume the public's not gonna know who's on the committee.
I don't know about that. But the committee would be a lot like any other study committee that we have. Some of them composed of teachers, some of them teachers and administrators. They meet too without the public knowing. And all they really do is make recommendations. They don't make policy, but what they, they do the legwork. They study things, you know, research things, and then eventually will make a recommendation. This committee will make a recommendation. Then it's, it's in the board's hands. The board is the only one that votes on these things. This committee doesn't have a vote.
Well, I'm concerned that there's going to be a discussion about closing boards specifically, is what I'm concerned with, that will take place behind closed doors rather than open It may be that you make a recommendation to this board to study whether or not to close a building at some point. Or it may be that they, on their own, decide to make their recommendation to you to close the building at some point. My concern is that the public will not be allowed to participate in that discussion, not the vote, the discussion. I would like to ask the board tonight, since it's on the agenda, to consider limiting any discussion about, no, I'm not saying that right, to consider taking away the ability of this committee to discuss closing buildings specifically. If it comes up that they want to do that, I would like them to kick it up to you and for you to create a separate committee that the public would be allowed to participate in or to see. I'm asking for you to, for you to not, to take away the ability of this, of this committee to discuss that in secret. And I'm saying secret, meaning that the public's not gonna have any foreknowledge about this discussion or that it's gonna take place.
Do you understand that if the board were to consider closing a building, that there would be considerable public involvement?
Right, I am aware of that.
Prior to that time?
I am aware of that.
I mean, that's, that's not something that this, or I don't think any other board would do without involving the public.
My concern is that this is such a sensitive topic, that the public missing out on even the suggestion, you know, the kernel of where this is coming from, would be harmful. If, if this is going to happen, if you guys are gonna make a recommendation that this happen, or that, or if they're going to make a recommendation to you that it happen, I'd rather see you create a separate, a separate committee to do this at that time, rather than have this committee have within its scope the discussion about closing buildings.
Where would the committee come from? Would it come from us five?
Well, you guys would, you guys would appoint it just like any other committee. It would just be a special committee for that specific purpose. I mean, you can, you could keep your committee for facilities to keep everything, you know, to speed everything along, so you don't have to sit here for three hours talking about what to do with buildings in the meantime. But at the point where a decision is, is being suggested that a building be closed, and I'm sure you guys can appreciate this meeting from all eight, you create something statutorily that will, I don't know if you're able to do that in support, you create something that will be open to the public from the very, very beginning, so there's no discussion missed out on, so it would avoid any, you know, anyone thinking that you were having discussions behind the closed doors in the first place.
So you want us to say no, that when we get this committee together, that we can talk about buildings, but as soon as somebody brings up closing a building, we have to stop talking about it?
Not within their scope, not within their scope of responsibilities. It would be kicked back up to you if that's what, if they've decided that there needed to be a discussion, and then you guys would create another committee or talk about it in open session at that point. So that the public would be wholly aware of any type of discussion that would happen regarding that. That's what I'm asking. I'm not sure how it's gonna go, how it's gonna word it or anything.
I understand what you're suggesting. Well, I'm on this meeting, I'm on this committee. We haven't met yet, but I've been in the house to be. And both cases. John? You will, you will get a response from us.
Okay.
Am I not gonna let you just sit there and wonder, did they even hear what I said?
I told her I'd back to her. I am totally for uniform. Quite a few parents that really are, and the more that I've spoken.
I'm sure, I'm sure that that's true.
Now, the children, on the other hand, not quite so.
But, yeah, we'll, we'll make a decision relative to this and, and let you know how we're gonna proceed.
I think you asked it the right way, excuse me Chuck, to, you know, maybe not go right to uniforms. That's a pretty big jump. But to revisit the, the policy, you know, the dress code, look at that, see what that says, and see if we can make it more black and white than it is gray.
And I will say too, I am a little bit concerned as a parent. I don't let my daughter do it too often, but this new playground equipment that we have, phenomenal, love it. Flip flops on it, that's kind of another thing possibly is the elementary level that I think maybe needs to kind of be looked at too. Just, it's kind of hard to do a rock climbing wall and go across the jungle gym when you've got flip flops on. They don't really have traction on the bottom, they're not attached to your foot. So, you know, maybe necessarily no flip flops, but bring a different pair of shoes for outside of it. I think that's just more so a safety. Mr. Fisher?
It does happen.
You have some logical concerns, that's.
Flip flops do cause some injuries, and they run faster than let their feet go, and then they skin your toes up, and you lose that.
Cause a little extra noise in the building.
Little bleeding and a little, yeah.
Are we gonna put the, is that my, is that my? Okay, we're gonna look through personnel. Any other patients? None. Contracts?
Three. Trial strike for head girls call.
$1,095.
Fourteen. Jane Paulson, associate.
$895 an hour.
Kristen, Kristen Stock, middle school girls basketball.
Does that fill all of our coaching?
No.
It's two, two please, and two grand one.
One of those.
Girls basketball. Those are the three contracts we have.
I'm going to approve the contracts after that.
Second?
There's some second approved candidates? Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those in favor say aye.
What was that, in the open, please?
Jane Paulson.
K.A.Y.N.E. Paulson, P.A.U.L.S.E.N., associate in Walleye. Motion in a second.
Okay. Motion in a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, carries five zero. Okay. Now, we're going to move to the consent items for those of you who are opening meetings before consent items until we're through the board.
The second page of the organizational meeting minutes. Marty got all ten copies, so...
No, it was like fifteen.
Those were...
Is there a revolting?
So, hopefully we got through those tonight. Any question on the minutes, then? If you look at the bills, I'm just going to hit the highlights, then you can ask me questions. On the first page, we have built apparel control systems for $12,096. That was work on the controls here at the SAC Elementary. That was repair work in the high school building. And the final payment on the heating and cooling of the FCS and administrative office. We should be pretty well caught up there. The bill right below that to CDWG is for carts and projectors and cameras for the classrooms. A little farther down, Clark Equipment Bot Cat Company was...was held out of broom last winter on one of the skid loads, so that's a replacement.
Is that where we got the bot cat from, those guys?
We bought that used through the guy in Carol's.
We got that deal on Carol.
Haley.
Haley. Okay.
On the back of that, the college library, we bought library books. That's good. We're supposed to do. Iowa Central textbooks, the $6,500 is for textbooks. Iowa Computer Depot, there's a little bit of supplies there and parts, but primarily that's maintenance on our computers. So much per hour, so much per unit to get it fixed. Bottom of that page, GMC for $4,600 is our annual fee for all four buildings combined now for our student data system. Next page, you'll find scattered throughout these bills, depending on when it showed up or when the bill came. We put new copiers in the offices. We ran about $8,000 in office. So, you'll see the payment to Midwest Office of various funds. The bottom of page three, to school specialty for $28,802. That's about $28,000 with the lunching tables. We put new tables in this building.
This building, middle school.
Yeah. So, it was about thirty...I think I counted thirty-one tables.
That was part of the summer project.
That's part of what was the last one. Skip a couple pages. Page five, Keys Interiors. That was auditorium carpet at the bottom of page five there. And right below that was the CFCS count on top to Lakeview Lumber. So, the CS one is being used. Top of the next page is the final payment to the electrician, Norman Electric, for $3,100 on that same project. Those are the big ones I had highlighted. Do you have any questions that I missed?
We have back on Iowa Lakes Community College for $5,800.
Okay. Accomplished.
Conference registration.
It's actually a special education tuition expense, is what that is. One student, one semester. And the student is still in our enrollment, and we have funded by the state. And then, starting to put together some financial statements for the new district. We have a page called Esack County Fund Balance Comparison, 9/31 versus 9/310. Capital projects funds, which is the capital and loss fund combined, are $427,000 lower than a year ago. Expected with the summer projects we put in. That was all the remodeling, the roof, everything.
How much of that was the roof?
$295,000. But, so that wasn't unexpected. The operating fund being down $136,000 is something we're going to watch. It's, you know, on a $10 million budget, that's 1%. So, it's nothing to...simple to click that. But on the other hand, if it's growing that much every month, then, well, we're going to take a look at things. So, I did look at first quarter last year versus first quarter this year, and revenues are down and expenses are up. So, it's not just one side of the equation. Both sides are going on.
Is this the year we're not getting paid for consolidation money?
We were able to count that last year, yeah, so it's not going to be again, but...
That'll start coming again this year?
Yes.
So, this will catch up, maybe?
Well, we hope, yeah.
We hope.
It's just definitely something we're going to watch, and we'll keep presenting this information in a similar manner. So, we'll see what the trend is.
Well, I think the trend is a critical piece, and we certainly will watch that. But again, just from a common sense approach to budgeting with 0% allowable growth, and you know that we have increased expenses, we knew that this...that side is going to go down. We just have to manage it.
I know we were not a negative number, Gene Thirty. So, this is something that's happened the first quarter of this year, that we've gone negative. So, we need to watch it, and we will, and we've started it. On the back of that, just kind of a breakdown on expenses. And we're trying to do something similar to this, but we'll probably give you some percentages how it compares to the budget we approved, percentage wise. For instance, we approved in the operating fund, our approved expenses for this year were just over $10 million. So, for the first quarter, with expenditures of $2 million, we're 20% through our budget, which is probably right. We'll continue to get these refined and give you valuable information hopefully.
So, this is a little...
Any other questions? I would entertain a motion to approve the bill to Albright Oil for $17,824.
Subdue.
A second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. I entertain a similar motion for Lakeview and Walleye Lumber. I think it was three bills totaling $6,129.89.
I'll make that motion in a second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes, financial reports, and all the remaining bills on account.
I'll make that motion. A second.
Motion in a second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Done. Thank you. I think we're through the agenda, folks. Anything else? Anything you'd like?
Future agenda.
Future agenda.
You know, one thing that, I guess I shouldn't bring this up now, but I forgot to do it when we were discussing it. The senior passes, it doesn't look like we've given a lot of recons back, so a lot of them are new. Is that right?
Right.
That's correct.
There's just a small handful.
There was maybe a handful, but either said keep it, or we wrote some checks to the booster club. They said, give my money to the booster club.
That's good. That's a whole reason why I'm here, is to make new people look up. It's been really...yeah, everybody I talked to said, they'll get it if they haven't gotten it.
I've had a number of people thank me.
Didn't happen from the school board.
Hopefully they show up, was it? Yeah.
I get thanked a lot.
Because we talk to a lot.
Oh, but pretty good.
It's a good thing.
I have a lot of people showing a lot of appreciation for the fact that we recognize them there.
I think all I could call a sign up for that one, right?
Yeah, we'll keep that on.
Well, that's one, handbook language, possibly.
Yeah, that's ready to go.
And...
Maybe this other topic, that's going to take me a while, but...
Third one is...
It should be the twenty-first.
When is it?
Twenty-first.
Should be able to have a brief report from the convention.
Could that be in Lakeview, Ken? Meeting?
Rotating them now with the logic. But we did have, I guess, and the board can talk about it, but a suggestion that perhaps having a meeting or two actually held in autumn would be a good thing. And I think it's a great idea, because we'd have to find a place to do it for a little bit. A library probably would be one, if it fails. Something different. But I don't think...let's go to Lakeview next week. Come on.
Could you have a short technology update? I mean, just, I haven't heard any drumboons yet this year, but just so we know.
You have that shit.
We put a lot of money into it last year, and it's nice to know.
We'll do.
I'm going to be adjourned. Listen to the adjournment in a second. Those in favor say aye.